Good morning, everyone. If we could come to order, I have a call to order the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Welcome all. We will start with the roll call. Should I slow roll this? Madam Clerk, you ready? All right. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Commissioners Antor, Baker, Breevy, Boojack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Commissioners Hennessy.
Here.
Hildenbrand, Coleman, LaGrand.
Here.
I hear you. McLeod.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Sparks.
Present and here.
Teal.
Here.
Wooden. Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 members present, five absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now for our invocation, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I am joined by Reverend Daniel Smith, who is the pastor of Messiah Baptist Church, where my daughters were baptized, and he is going to lead us in invocation.
Amen. I also recognize that there are various religious perspectives present, but I'll be praying from a Christian perspective. Amen. If you'd look to the Lord with me in prayer. Kind Creator, we thank you for this morning. We thank you for everything that you do in our lives. You've been great to us, Father, a friend, a mother, a daughter, a sister, a son. You've been to us in everything that we need. So God, first of all, we ask that you would continue to touch every mission, ministry, and every person that's connected with this city and this county. And God, we need your guidance as the various individuals of our society are hurting and going through the various transitions. We look to you for guidance. You're our Father, and everything that we need comes through you. So we ask, God, that you fill this room with your presence in everything that's needed for us to thrive and survive. We look to you for it. It's in the name of Jesus I do pray. Amen.
Thank you, my Alpha Brother.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll now move to our special order of business, and for the first special order, I would ask Paul Ryan, the past commander of the United Veterans Council, to join me at the podium. Sorry, I have an obstacle course I have to go through to get here. As we all know, Memorial Day is coming up, and so in recognition of that, I have a proclamation, and then I will introduce Paul Ryan, the former or past commander of the United Veterans Council. Whereas Memorial Day is a solemn occasion honoring the memory of the brave men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the defense of the freedoms uniquely valued by all residents of this nation, and whereas it is our sacred duty to uphold the honor and the memory of the countless individuals from Kent County who courageously gave their lives in service to our country, and whereas for nearly 90 years, the United Veterans Council of Kent County has demonstrated unwavering commitment to the county by fostering collaboration among veteran service organizations to enhance the lives of veterans and military-connected families, and whereas the council's significant contributions include the organizations of the annual Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades in Grand Rapids, as well as the dissemination of essential vital information regarding the veterans-related activities, benefits, and programs, along with the annual recognition of a distinguished Kent County Veteran of the Year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby urge the residents of Kent County to join with the United Veterans Council to observe Memorial Day on Monday, May 27, 2024, and participation in the Veterans Memorial Park Celebration in Grand Rapids on Saturday, May 25, 2024. Signed by Board Chair Stan Steck, Commissioner Michelle McLeod, and Ben Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Chair Stack said, I represent the United Veterans Council of Kent County. Serving Kent County for almost 90 years, the council is a consortium of veteran service organizations, including the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, and vets, and disabled American veterans, among others. The council promotes the interest of all American veterans by providing a vehicle for united action in pursuit of those objectives. The council has managed the Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades in downtown Grand Rapids for many years. Previously, the parade was held on May 30, which was the traditional date for the Memorial Day until 1971, when the National Observance was changed to the last Monday in May. In an attempt to increase the number of parade spectators, the council will hold this year's parade and a ceremony immediately following on Saturday, May 25, beginning at 10:00 a.m. We want to give the public an opportunity at the beginning of the three-day weekend to join us in reflecting on the true meaning of Memorial Day, and then to enjoy the weekend as they wish. The council is also encouraging communities, especially schools throughout Kent County, to participate in the parade and ceremony. We want to include as many individuals, families, and organizations as possible. The council encourages residents throughout Kent County to join us on May 25, and invites the county to participate in the parade. For example, a county-owned vehicle would be welcomed in the parade. Be happy to discuss details further as you may desire. Finally, the council is extremely grateful to Commissioner Katie DeBoer for her effort in identifying council municipalities for us to contact regarding the Memorial Day parade. She is a valued member of our planning group. Thank you.
So for our next special order of business, we have our friends from First Step Kent's Annual Report. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Chair Stack. I'm Jennifer Headley-Nordman. I'm the very proud president of First Step's Kent, and we have the privilege of administering the Ready by Five Early Childhood Millage. This morning, this feels a little familiar for us to be here, so it's nice to see everyone again, and we've had some deep dive conversation about the Early Childhood Millage. So this morning's presentation is really going to be high-level, providing some updates as to what we've been up to in the last year, and Heather Boswell, who's our vice president, is going to assist with technology so we can get through this efficiently. And at the end, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask those. So quick grounding again. What is Ready by Five? We provide dedicated public funding concentrating on early childhood with the goal of healthy development, reaching developmental milestones, and ensuring children are ready for school when they start. So 2023 by the numbers, where are we at currently? We reached 13,600 children and families last year. As we've shared before, we are now present in every single ZIP code throughout Kent County, and our largest concentration, which was what we were hoping to achieve, is really focusing on those opportunities of codes. So when we make investment in communities, we can get the most impact and have the greatest outcome that we're hoping to achieve. And we've also seen an increase in the number of families that have been able to participate in a full dosage of programs and services, meaning when they sign up, have they been able to go through the continuation of the recommended course. So rather than hear from me all morning, I wanted to be able to share some voices of some parents and providers, and I did want to also acknowledge and thank the Ward family. They graciously gave us permission to continue to allow Jocelyn Ward to be featured in some of our presentations and information, and this was one of the last pieces that she did for us before she passed, so.
I think it's really important that we invest in our community, and especially since having a child, I see how important it is to invest in our children really young. And you might think some things are common sense, but they're not common sense for everyone. People need that support.
The more support you can get, the better, because it takes certain things off your plate. It gives you the ability to connect with your child without having a ton of stressors on top of it.
We walk alongside them. We work together as a team. Any questions that they have, whatever their primary focus is, that's what we zone in on and then just work through it.
We have a very strong focus on parent-child bond. We really encourage families, when we do the visits and sit down on the floor with the children, we want the parents to interact with them. We'll model what to do, but then we really encourage the parents to take the lead.
You always learn. I love learning about new things. I love learning about new techniques, new ways to communicate with my child, or to help me understand what they're trying to say, because kids are communicating, we just have to figure out how they're communicating.
We receive a developmental screening every few months, and it has a questionnaire, and then you check off if your baby's doing the things within the questionnaires, yes or no, and then you get a score based on where they're at currently. And then it'll tell you how to improve your score, things to look out for, different activities to do with your baby based on their age.
It's been tremendous how much Kareem has benefited. I think that he's had a chance to just witness what other kids are doing, and you'll see how he looks and observes and learns, and then he'll try it too.
If you're not in the early childhood field, you know, you don't always know all of the best things to do for your kid, and it might not be something that your parents did for you. So I think having this is helpful to give parents the tools they need to best support their kids.
Great. So we'll talk a little bit this morning about what it means to be ready, because as we start to go through some numbers and share what we've been up to in the last year, I think it's important to think about readiness for life in school as a whole child concept. And so things like enthusiasm towards learning, ability to listen and communicate, desire to be independent, playing well with others, appropriate physical tasks, and some basic letter and number recognition are the types of things that we're working to achieve through the programming and services. So we're going to go through the four different focus areas that we have for the Ready by Five Millage. The first that we'll share is outreach and navigation. That really gets to us letting parents and families in the community know what is available in terms of programs and services, also to be able to connect them to assessments and screening, and then also, how do you navigate the system that we have in Kent County? We're lucky that we have a lot of really high-quality programs and services, and how can you find those and how can you maximize? In 2023, we had a total number of screenings of 7,200, an investment of a little over 200, or 2 million, rather, and then the number of programs that were running these types of services and outreach were three. Healthy development, our next area looks at identification early on to make sure that if there's developmental concerns, we're addressing those early, healthy and safe home initiatives, fetal infant mortality review, and then also behavioral or mental health concerns that might be present that families or schools need support with. Then for healthy development, the number of encounters was 17,214. We had a total number of enrollment of 850, and about 2.6 million was the investment for this category, as well as 15 total programs. Early learning, which are the play and learn groups and the early literacy development focus, we had a total number of attendance of 8,600 within our play and learn, 31,200 reach-out-and-read pediatric visits, total investment about 1.1 million, and the number of programs equaled five. Parent education and support focused on home visiting, translation and interpretation services, as well as child safety initiatives, with a total number of encounters 12,531, total enrolled 2,300, total investment about 2.3 million, and then the number of programs that operated was 15. And then just to give an overview, since the millage began, to be able to show the growth in programs, as well as the growth in the total number of families and children served annually. So we started out slow, and over time, we've grown, and so I really like to concentrate on about 2020 up through 2023 in terms of the annual number that was served, going up from 3,500 to now 14,000. The number of programs again started small, and then we're now at about 32 annually. And so we've seen consistent growth year after year and towards the participation, as well as the number of programs that are operating. And then these are just some quotes from some families that shared some feedback with us regarding what Ready by Five services and programs means to them, and how they're grateful that we have a community that supports a millage and really wants to be able to focus on improving early childhood outcomes. And that's the end of our slide deck. A couple just updates in terms of what we're up to now and what's on the horizon. And so the current Ready by Five RFP is officially released. Complete information about the funding opportunity can be found online. There are eight types of services that agencies can apply under, and the deadline for the proposal submission is May 28 at 3:00 p.m. The Ready by Five evaluation continues with the impact analysis that will show how participation in Ready by Five programs on students' academic readiness for success in kindergarten. And then also, we invite Ready by Five service providers and all interested community stakeholders to join us as we reveal findings from the Ready by Five Early Childhood Millage evaluation and delve into the data to understand the impact of services. This date will be on June 27. It will be here locally, and we encourage you to register if you'd like to attend that day. I'm open for any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you so much, especially for making that 10-minute rule. That was so good.
I tried. Could you tell? I was like trying to keep the cadence going.
You did very well. All right, Commissioner King. Oliver King, sorry.
That's okay. Lisa, okay, is fine. Good morning, and thank you for the presentation. So I was looking back through my notes, and I'm so glad you're here. I got a call from a constituent asking the question, isn't the Ready by Five program the same as Head Start and Kent ISD? Could you please clarify that?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I mean, we're lucky enough as a state and a community that we have a lot that's happening in early childhood. So Head Start is federally supported, and so that's a specific preschool program. There's Head Start and there's Early Head Start, so for three- and four-year-olds, and that is not something that is supported by the millage. It's something, again, that's a federal program, and the money comes from the federal level. And then, I'm sorry, you had another part to the question?
Well, I guess.
Oh, Kent ISD? Yes, yes. And so Kent ISD has specific preschool programs, things like GSRP, and there's specific preschool programs that are for those children that have been identified as meeting criteria for special education. And so again, there's federal monies and state monies that are intertwined to be able to support those particular programs, but they're very specific, and those are not something that is supported through the millage. And so we don't currently, the millage doesn't cover the costs for those types of preschool programs, and really, the purpose that we have is finding those holes within the system and filling those. And so where there's not other programs or services that exist, we're able to walk alongside those and fill in the gaps that might be necessary, because we're trying to do as much as we can to make sure when kids hit kindergarten, they've had all of those opportunities to be successful.
So just to be clear, there is no duplication.
No duplication present at all, or for the future either, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Speaking of specifics, I was wondering, do you have any information specifically geared towards autism, any identifying and treating that, and any trends that we're seeing within that? I know those numbers keep going up, and I'm just wondering what Ready by Five is, how they're working within that arena.
Sure. So the one thing that I would say about, well, first of all, I'll also share that my background is I'm a psychologist, so I do have just some personal experience within that space as well. But the developmental screenings that we talked about, I think, have really been beneficial and key, because the key to identifying and supporting autism is you want to figure those things out as early as you can to support the child in the family unit. And so I will say, over time, we see more families taking advantage of that opportunity, right? Asking for those developmental screenings and participating in that. And so as, you know, we continue to move forward, once those developmental screenings are completed, then families may use the outreach and navigation to then connect or to be able to have conversations with pediatricians or other clinicians in the space, as well as that is information that can then be leveraged and provided with the local school district to be able to maximize those sources. And so I would say that families are more aware, and for us as a community that has that additional layer that you can get a developmental screening, that's going to, hopefully, and showing over time, more people are taking advantage of that to ask questions. And I would say in terms of like specific information, the course of increase of autism diagnosis, either in a clinical setting or within a school system, those types of things, you know, you could look up online for those particular pieces. And so we're not specifically keeping track of numbers for diagnosis in that particular category, but we are, over time, seeing more people take advantage of those, you know, kind of early screening opportunities. Hopefully that answered, yeah.
Yeah, just like to add, as a grandfather of an autistic grandson who was identified and treated very early, his progress is off the chains. I mean, it's just incredible. And I guess, looking back now historically, for a lot of years, that wasn't the case. They were still trying to figure things out. And as those kids got older, it was harder for them to slide into a more normal lifestyle. But yeah, it's been an amazing deal, and I'm not even sure who my daughter went through, how she got to where she got, but the support's been fantastic. So this is part of the awareness. If you have any questions, get those screenings, because the earlier, the better, for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Also, as an answer, you might check with Network 180 as the lead provider in the autism services. All right, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jennifer, thanks for being here. Always appreciate hearing about the great work. Knowing that Ready by Five funded programs are nearly or at capacity, how does that 14,000 number that you served in 2023 compare to the potential target population of folks that could benefit from services?
We know that we have about, maybe we're serviced, so I'm thinking, I'm just going to double-check my number before I say out loud. I think there's still capacity for probably about 25% more that we could continue to grow in terms of reach. I'm very encouraged that there's more individuals that know about us and know about the services and programs, and over time, we want to continue to have that number grow, but we know that we still have a group of families and children in our community that are not accessing, and there's still opportunity for growth there.
And speaking of growth, can you talk a little bit about some of the efforts that you're undertaking to connect in with organizations where children and families are, so that it's not just them finding you, but you're also finding them, connecting in with service providers?
Yeah, absolutely. As I had shared earlier, our goal is to not supplement or replace, or, you know, we have great programs and services here. It's just to be able to connect those pieces. Some of the things that we do is when we are meeting with Ready by Five providers to just to talk about quality assurance and coordination and collaboration, you'll often hear within those spaces that they talk to one another about what's happening within the spaces, how can they leverage each other's, you know, parent networks to be able to make sure that we're spreading the word in a more strategic and thoughtful way. And so those are some of the things that we try to do, is to go out and have good relationships with organizations that are receiving Ready by Five money, as well as organizations that are considering applying for Ready by Five money, and just so that we can make sure that those programs and services in the community that our residents want to support and want to fund and can be successful for our children, and that we're looking at all of those opportunities.
Great. I've got one more question, if I may, Mr. Chair. It'll be brief. Knowing that Ready by Five doesn't currently fund seats for students in preschool daycare spaces, how do you work with those services like GSRP that are engaging with that? How are you connecting the dots between the programmatic services that you all are funding and supporting through the millage and those existing programs so that you're not duplicating efforts? How do you create this sort of better connection between the programs, the students, where they're at, and the parents?
Yeah, we have a good cadence with Kent ISD and have conversations with the local school districts as well. I mean, I personally went out and tried to meet with every single superintendent in the last year, because we want to make sure that we're supporting each other's work. If there's a child that's in a GSRP classroom, but that family could benefit from Ready by Five services, either for that child or for younger children in the family, we're trying to have regular conversations and provide them with information about that. I would say, within Kent County, we're very lucky, and that a lot of us in the early childhood sector are on a lot of committees and engaging in conversation a lot, because ultimately, we want to be thoughtful and responsible with taxpayer investment. We want to be responsible for making sure we're strategic and thinking ahead. Again, we don't want to duplicate or start something new if something's existing and needs that support, and so that's where I'd say that our connections are. Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Thank you. If there is no one else, again, thank you so much for being here this morning and getting us up to speed on where you folks are and all the great work that you do.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right. Our next special order of business is from our friends at Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan, and I see Kendrick is here, and Cassie, you're both going to address this good.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Kendra Kinelein. I'm the CEO at the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan, more commonly referred to as AAAWM.
Good morning. I'm Cassie Capel. I'm Vice President of Contract Services and Program Development. I oversee the funding process for both our Older Americans Act and the Kent County Senior Millage.
So we're going to do a dual presentation today. I'm going to give a brief overview of the agency, and then Cassie's going to touch on more about the Kent County Senior Millage and what we have upcoming. So our agency was created in 1974. We are celebrating 50 years this year. The original intent was to build a network not only throughout the state of Michigan, but throughout the nation. So we have 16 area agencies covering all the counties in Michigan, and we are, look to be the one-stop shop for aging initiatives. So whether that's housing, whether that's information, or direct services, that was the intent for our creation, and is that's what we uphold with our mission. We most recently went through a strategic planning initiative to look at our mission, look at our agency, look at our network, and how can we make sure that with our mission, our vision, and our values, we're participating not only for older adults and those with disabilities, but for our partners and the caregivers that we serve. So we changed our mission to include So we changed our mission to include that. So through internal expertise, external partnerships, and advocacy, the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan looks to provide older adults, adults with disabilities and their caregivers equitable access to services that promote independence and dignities in their communities. And as a reminder, when we're talking about the communities that we're serving, we do serve a nine-county region. So those nine counties make up what's called Region Eight, which is the region that we serve. So you can see Algen, Ionia, Kent, Lake, Mason, McCosta, Montcom, Nuego, and Osceola County through different funding services is our service region throughout Region Eight. But to focus more on Kent County, I'm going to hand it over to Cassie.
Thank you. So this is a slide showing our 2024 Kent County Senior Village. So just as a quick overview, Kent County Senior Village, taxpayer dollars going to many of our amazing partners. We have over 30 agencies that we partner with through the Kent County Senior Village. We categorize the different services, which we fund over 50 unique types of services. Those are categorized between priority, supportive, access, and general. A couple examples of those categories. Priority services are things like Adult Day, transportation, home-delivered meals. Supportive services could be the personal emergency response buttons. For access services, it could be housing coordination, care management, information and assistance. And then general services, just a couple are adaptive equipment, vision and dental. And technology support was one of our newest ones coming out of the pandemic. So this is just a highlight of those that are eligible at 60 and over in Kent County. And again, we just have a great partner network to serve a variety, a continuum of services to really meet the needs of older adults, to support them where they want to live in the community. This year is our 25-year anniversary of having the Senior Village, so it's a big year of anniversaries at our agency. This is a snapshot of our '23 fiscal year, so that was a nine-month last year between January and September. Just a couple things to highlight. We continue to see a growth in the services and the communities that we serve. We really try to reach all corners of our county and do a lot of marketing with our partners to get the information out and services in the hands of all of our residents in Kent County. This is a snapshot of our partners currently for FY24. The newest partner that joined us this year was the Hispanic Center. They are providing outreach and assistance now, and we just finished our FY25 planning for next year, and we have potentially one new partner, Care Resources, providing Adult Day for the coming year. So always looking for those new partnerships, making connections. And then we also help our network of providers talk with each other because we know if an older adult needs one service, they might need additional services, so really being holistic. This is a slide of our in-house services that we have for Kent County and all of our regions. So just a highlight, we provide an area agency, caregiver support, engaging wellness is our exercise programs throughout our region to really focus on that preventative, to keep people strong and healthy in their home. Advocates for Senior Issue, advocacy is a huge part of what we do in bringing those issues and raising the voices of what older adults need. Dementia Friends is educational information for the community. We have transportation partners through RideLink. Elder Abuse is another educational awareness preventative service. Our Medicare Medicaid Assistance Program helps older adults navigate the insurance world and options. And then our ombudsman, our advocacy individuals for residents in long-term care facilities. So a host of different kinds of services that we have under our roof.
So to touch on a little bit further about the services that we provide, so through Older American Act, which is federal and state funding, then the Kent County Senior Village, we provide care management services. So what that is, is interdisciplinary team made up of a licensed master social worker and a registered nurse that go out into the homes of the older adults that we serve. They prepare a care plan, and then through purchases of service dollars, we look to bring that care plan and those services into the home. So whether that's 40 hours of in-home care, whether that's meals, transportation, based off of what that care plan is, we use those purchases of service dollars to provide that. So you can see here, the requirements are to be 60 and older, in need of ongoing management and care, which is determined through that assessment that we do with that interdisciplinary team at our agency. That is a building block to our My Choice Waiver Program, so the Medicaid Waiver Program. You can see here, there's a few different requirements for this program. So we are able to serve those 18 to 64 with a certified disability or those who are 65 and older. You need to be financially eligible, Medicaid-eligible, and require a nursing home level of care. So what that looks like is we try to bring those services that older adults, someone with a disability, would go to a nursing facility for into the home and into the community. You can see a list there, so that includes Adult Day, medication management, nursing services. We try to make sure that everybody has the equal opportunity to choose if and when they go to a nursing facility and have those supportive services brought into the home so they have a more choice to make with those services that are being provided. I touched on earlier our strategic plan. We're going to give you a brief overview of some of the things coming from that.
So one of the first initiatives that we are going to tackle later this year is our Kent County Senior Village Strategic Plan for the upcoming years. Last year, we concluded our last strategic plan, so looking forward to see what the coming years are. And this process will include the Kent County Senior Village Review Committee, which some of you are part of, area agency staff, and then we'd invite some county staff as well to be a part of that, just to see. The needs are always changing. How can the village best serve our older adults and meet those needs with the data that we have and the input from the community? So we are looking to do that later this fall. And then one new partnership, we know housing is a basic thing everyone needs, and we are looking to expand our partnership to having at least one new housing partner moving forward to just, again, help meet the need, be involved in the conversations to help support and get people connected to the housing of their choice. So those are a couple initiatives coming up.
And we also have our Essential Care at Home Program. So that's where we're looking to provide practice into the home. So primary care practices. We're going to hire nurse practitioners and a medical director to bring those primary care practices into the home. We're going to do that by billing Medicare for those services. So one of the barriers we see to getting out for primary care checkups is transportation, caregiver stress, so on and so forth. So we're looking to alleviate that. We are going to create a new website interface, so when people come to our agency through our website or social media outlets, it's as accessible as possible and you're easily able to disseminate that information. We're creating a return on investment for our outreach initiatives. So when we do intentional marketing, what is the call influx that we get? What are people actually getting connected to the services if we're at a table and event, an expo, so on and so forth? And then from there, we're going to develop KPIs to make sure that we're stretching our dollars as far as we can and making as many people aware of the services as possible. We're going to continue to advocate for our waiver program and our long-term care ombudsman program, so that's just for this year. We will update that going into fiscal year '25. And then we want to create a collaborative workforce. So one of the things we've been focusing on at the agency is our employee retention. We want to maintain our employee retention at 96%. So we're setting the benchmark of 4% or less turnover at our agency for the coming year. And we want to do that through whether it's staff initiatives, obviously wages, but then also what are we able to provide our employees because they really are the experts? And the longer we can retain them, the better our community and our partners and our clients are benefiting from their expertise. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to have a full workforce, not only within our agency, but throughout our partner network as well. I think that's as fast as we can go through that in 10 minutes, so we'd be happy to entertain questions we can have.
Wow, right in the nose. Good. All right, questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Bojack.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate you being here today and sharing with us. We had the Ready by Five. Interesting that we have the exact opposite. Now, we should probably call you Ready for 80. Yeah, the Ready for 80 Agency. I'm over 60 and, yeah, Ready by 80, Ready for 80. So I'm over 60 myself and eligible for your services, but no thanks.
You'll have to apply later, Commissioner.
I did have a question regarding the respite service. Exactly what is respite services?
So we have a variety of respite services that we provide through the village and from other funding sources. It could be Adult Day respite, could be in-home respite. We have different programs like respite certificates where it's a short-term meeting needs for if a caregiver is going on vacation or they have a sudden need. We just had someone needing to go to a funeral and they couldn't care for their loved ones, so we had a respite provider get connected and help while they had to step away. So a variety of services that we can assist with, but it's that break, whether in an in-home or out-of-home setting, that can support the caregiver.
And how do you apply for those services?
Give us a call. We can run through them all.
All right, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Kendrick, Cassie, thank you for being here today. I got just two quick questions that are kind of intertwined. You know, you go through your presentation on getting the money, Medicaid, and all of that, and people that I talk to that are caring for someone, that's one of the most difficult things to do, is to navigate the system of the federal government in order to get the services delivered. Are there any things we can do to improve that? And then, second of all, you know, you have, I saw that there was two sponsors that target outreach to caregivers. And that's another thing. I mean, when I talk to someone that's caring for an elder, you know, family member, normally they're the last ones that are going to come out and say that I need help. I mean, can you expand on the outreach that you go to get there? Because I don't think they're the ones that are going to pick up a phone and call for help.
Yeah, so I'll touch on your first question about navigating the system in general. So it is a complicated system. We have a couple different ways we try to navigate that and simplify that for people calling or connecting with our agency. We have our MAP, our Medicare Medicaid Assistance Program, where we take people through what are their options. Currently in Kent County, there's over 58 Medicare Advantage Plans available to somebody. We try to narrow that decision down to two to three that best fit the needs for them and then give them the paperwork, help them fill that out, and where to submit that and navigate that channel during open enrollment, then the rolling enrollment process as well. We have our information, our INA team, Information and Assistance Team, where there's a lot of different, I'll just say for lack of a better term, hurdles to getting access to some of these services. So we try to take them through a streamlined assessment, fill that out, send in the documentation, say whether it's coming from a facility, whether it's coming from a primary care practice, to bundle that and keep them updated throughout that process to kind of walk alongside of them, to navigate the paperwork to getting access to our services. And then we connect them with those services and give them a start date, so on and so forth. So, lack of a better term, the best thing to do is call our agency, and we're trying to do everything on a backend to be able to make it a simple process. And then caregivers. So we say at the agency, caregiving is an 80-hour position. You work your full 40 hours, and you have 40 hours you're providing care at home. And they're usually the last ones to connect with our agency or connect about themselves. It's always focused on the person they're caring for. So we have what we've been opening up and what we've been doing. We have the Caregiver Resource Network and Family Caregiver University. So we try to look and see whether it's through our needs assessment, whether it's through our partner network, what are things caregivers need? Do you need to know how to use a hoarder lift? Do you need to know how to fill out a will and testament? Do you need to know where to go for respite services? When we bring those in monthly to educate the caregivers to get them the support they need. And then through our respite programs, that is one initiative. But then also, our education about Adult Day Centers, about transportation. So you don't always need to be there to provide the ride. We can have a transportation provider go into the home and provide those services. So it's really that education and outreach. But it also is, you know, when we go out into the community and I ask people, raise your hand if you've ever heard about the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan. It's us getting the word out into these populations so they even know about these services on the first hand, so.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Briefly, I just wanted to commend the work that you guys do. A few years ago, well, I'll start. I think that you can really judge a community, a society, by the respect and care it shows for its elders, right? And I think we do a great job of that here. A few years ago, my grandparents were relocating. They were not relocating yet, but they were living in Lee County, Florida, which is a wonderful place to visit on vacation, but they needed a lot of different care. And I was trying to help them navigate that because I'm the guy they call when they have government questions. And I said, I just got to get you back to Kent because if you were here, I know exactly where to go, and navigating it there was a real challenge. So you answered some of my comments, your questions about getting people, the usership up. Commissioner Ponstein kind of got to that. So I just, anything you can do to encourage more awareness, some of the programs that you guys have, you mentioned Care Resources. The PACE program is, you know, is a partnership there, and new partnership is great for the day programming, but just, and I encourage the commissioners too, that folks are already paying for this through the village. I think sometimes folks are too proud to reach out for help, and we have amazing help for folks in Kent County. So kudos, and please keep up the work on, you know, getting more people to utilize the services. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. My first question or first issue is, can you talk a little bit more? One of your priorities is funding for the ombudsman program. And given some of the headlines we've seen in newspapers in recent months, can you explain a little bit more what an ombudsman does and how it really works to protect us and you know, people who receive care and as caregivers for other people?
So ombudsmen, at a high level, are voices for those in nursing facilities, adult foster cares, and homes for the aged. So right now, currently in Region Eight, so the nine counties that we serve, we have two and a half ombudsmen to service our entire region, which breaks out to about one ombudsman per 5,000 beds that they're trying to advocate for. And when I say advocate, it can go from things, your call light's been on 24 hours, you haven't got the meals you were promised when you come here, you haven't received the bath that you said three times a week that you were receiving. So they go in, talk with the residents, and then work with the administration of these facilities to try to improve the quality of care for those that are in those facilities, the participants, the clients of those facilities. So the advocacy request we have is for the state of Michigan, but what it brings to our region is to add two and a half more ombudsmen to our region to get that ratio down to one ombudsman per under 2,000 beds. It's 1,994, but it's six under the recommendation that is made at a federal level for that.
Thank you. My other, it's 50th year. We changed the annual meeting format, and it's yet to come. Are you going to tell us the exciting news about how we're going to do this and?
We are.
And bring this to the community?
So in essence of timing also, we left flyers on the back for everybody, but it's our annual celebration taking place June 13th. And what it is, is a celebration of our Aging Network. So we have over 50 of our partners come into this event. It's going to be an expo style where you not only get to hear from Area Agency on Aging, but you're going to get to meet these partners. So you get to meet these Adult Day providers. You get to meet outreach providers, transportation providers, and get to learn more from them. As we look to educate the public on our services, we thought, A, we need to provide lunch. So lunch will be provided by Meals on Wheels of Western Michigan. And B, we need to give you an opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation with these providers. So you can really, we know all the great things they do, but the community needs to be able to see it. So that's going to be taking place at the Area Agency on Aging. It's going to be in our parking lot. It's going to be a full day, and it's June 13th. There's a flyer in the back, so please take that with you. I know Commissioner Hennessy has already handed it out as well. We'll send an email out after this as well, but everybody here is welcome, and please bring anybody that is interested in learning more about the Aging Network because it's going to be a great day to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBran.
Thank you, Chair. I'm really intrigued by the idea of home healthcare visits. It sounds brilliant. It sounds needed. Can you just give us a little bit more information? Are you direct hiring these people? Like, how is this going to work? Because it seems like you'd have to have a pretty high threshold of users to make it viable from day one, so curious to hear about that.
Yeah, so our, when we talk about making it viable, we have to have 110 participants we serve to make it viable. We got a grant through the Michigan Health Endowment to directly hire these staff. So we are going to be directly hiring the nurse practitioners, the medical director, the community health worker. But the only way we're able to actually bring it up to scale is we're going to be partnering with our sister organization out west for Oceana, Ottawa, and Muskegon County. So we're going to take our nine counties, there are three counties, and we're going to serve a 12-county region. We're going to coordinate it, so we're going to share the cost of a medical director because we can't shoulder that all on our own. We're going to share the 24/7 response that's going to need to come with this, with the phone lines, with the weekend coverage holidays, and we're going to use that to bring it up to scale, working with Region 14 Area Agency on Aging.
That sounds great, and I look forward. That sounds great, and I look forward to updates in the future about how well it's going.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you Chair, and thank you both for being here. I'm wondering if you all have ever had or have situations of people who you service coming to you with issues, with issues about getting care, essentially getting denied care by their, whatever plan they're on. Has that happened? Does that happen? And if it does, how do you handle that?
So, it happens weekly, to be honest. What we say at the agency, so one misnomer about our services is people think you have to be low income to access them, or people think that they are handout services, and we try to educate on that, that there's nothing at our agency that somebody shouldn't walk away with care, and why they, so when somebody is denied care, if it's more intensive, we try to have the supportive services that Cassie touched on earlier to provide them while they're on the waitlist for them to receive care. So, those waitlists fluctuate anywhere from two to four months, depending on where we're at with the caseload and funding, but we're able to either connect them with our services or connect them with a PACE, connect them with another organization that might not be directly funded by us, but it's part of the aging services that they need. And then we keep in constant contact with them where they're at. So, to give you an example, if they're waiting for a higher intensity medical care, but we can be bringing meals in there, we can be providing other services that they're going to need anyways, that they've already identified on their care plan, we use our other funding streams to do that while waiting for them to get proof for the plan or the coverage that they're looking for.
Thank you. And this is probably a very difficult, it's not going to have a very clear answer to it, but given that situation where you have weekly situations of people getting denied care, how much time do you spend trying to get that care or trying to resolve that situation?
I wouldn't feel, I would have to go back to our intake and our MAP counselors to give you a really good threshold of what that looks like. I mean, we, yeah, I would have to give you that information. I would follow up on that.
And show probably a lot of time.
Yeah, a lot of time.
A lot of time. I don't think that this is inappropriate or illegal, but I just want to do a quick shameless plug really quickly. I work in my day job for an organization called Michigan United. Specifically, we help people who have been denied care. We have a volunteer group of, a national group of volunteer lawyers who go through this process when people are getting denied care. I would love to connect with you all when you have some time, and kind of just leave it there to have people think about what that means to have weekly situations of people getting denied care and how much time people like yourselves have to spend trying to resolve that situation. So, thank you.
I look forward to that conversation. Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
All right. If there is no one else, again, thank you for being here this morning. I've had the pleasure of working with Kendrick and Cassie for years on the Allocation Committee, and this county is extremely well-served by both of you and the entire organization. So, thank you.
Thank you Chair Steck.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. If anyone here wishes to address the board with respect to agenda items only, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself and indicate your address and identify which item on the agenda you wish to address. I will note that there is a second opportunity for public comment on general jurisdiction matters later in the meeting. All right. I see no public comment at this point, so we'll move on to our next item, the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
I move the consent agenda is adopted.
Is there support? Supported by, all right, yeah, that guy over there. Commissioner wouldn't, questions, comments? All right, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Brevi, Boujack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman, LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden, Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item eight, the resolutions for today's date, and for eight A, I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
I move Resolution 58 of the Labor Agreement Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan with the Human Resources Department. Thank you.
Is supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this motion? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the, on the motion to adopt Resolution 58, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Brevi, Boujack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman, LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden, Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 58 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item eight B, and I will call on Commissioner Vice Chair Green.
Thank you Chair Steck. I move the adoption of Resolution 59, which would add two full-time positions to the prosecutor's office to support the domestic violence action network.
Supported by Commissioner LeGrand. I noticed that our prosecutor, Chris Becker, is here. If there's any questions, any questions on this particular motion? Commissioner LeGrand.
I don't have a question per se, just a comment. Anyone around this dais probably knows that I'm a big fan of the problem-solving courts, and I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm really glad we were able to contribute ARPA funds to this project to hopefully see some different outcomes and better results from our domestic violence court. So, very excited about progress being made in this area. Thank you Chair.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I see no one else. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 59er, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Brevi, Boujack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman, LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden, Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 59er is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight C, and I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you Chair Steck. In Commissioner Hildenbrand's absence, I will move the adoption of Resolution 60, Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan and Grant Application from the 17th Circuit Court.
Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Burl, questions or comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. All that support the motion, please say yes. Oppose it, please say no. It is approved. Thank you. We'll now move to item eight D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to move item 61 of today's date, the Mental Health Court Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant for the 17th District Court.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Are there questions or comments on this one? All right, I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 61, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Brevi, Boujack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman, LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden, Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 61 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight E, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you Chair. I move Resolution 62, property of today's date, property development rights donation from Hope Church Brethren coming to us from the administrator's office.
Thank you. Is there support for that one? Commissioner Antor, questions or comments? Receiving this gift. Not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 62, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Brevi, Boujack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman, LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden, Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 16 yes, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 62 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight F, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you Chair. I move that Resolution 63 of today's date, Rural Transit Assistant Program 2024 is adopted. Brought to us by Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support for that?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this motion? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes. Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. We'll move to item eight G, and I will again call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you Chair. I move that Resolution 64 of today's date, West Michigan Piranha Dull Quality Collaborative Mini Grant for Safe Firearms Storage Education. Brought to us by the Health Department is adopted.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Antor.
Just a shout-out. I notice Joanne Hogenson is here from the Health Department, and I've never really taken the time to thank her. She comes to these things. I don't know if anybody knows much about Joanne, but I'd say she's one of the county employees that works 24/7, 365, in and out of the public service we see here. She's a wonderful woman, and I just wanted to thank her for all the years of service. Not that she's going anywhere, but just wanted to thank her.
Unless she's taking a nap after that. All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, if not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes. Oppose, say no. It is approved. All right, for our last resolution of the day, I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you Chair. I move Resolution 65 of today's date, Summer 2024 General Operating Property Tax Levy coming to us from the administrator's office.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Questions, comments on this motion? I see none. This is a voice vote as well. All those that support, say yes. All those that oppose, say no. It is approved. All right, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to address the board with respect to matters of general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself by name and your address, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
How you doing everybody? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Tamarack Avenue. I don't even know what I want to start off with saying. It's been a lot of things that's been going on across Kent County. But first of all, I wanted to, you know, spread love and peace around the community. It's been a lot of things that's been going on that I really want to speak on, like the kid being killed by one of the Kent County sheriffs, or the kid being killed by a state police officer. I say these things because my family got killed. My cousin was killed by a state police officer in Illinois, and I've said that already before here. I just want to be able to, our state representatives, our state house, our state government, to be able to pass those bills, those 15 police bills that need to be passed in legislation so that we can hold our police officers and our law enforcement accountable. Because as we know, the system isn't fair to people of color. It's not fair to a lot of people. And so, I just want you guys to know that. I'm here, I'm an advocate. I'm an advocate for peace. I don't want to divide our country like usually political parties and people who have agendas that don't serve the best interests of people, but I'd be wrong not to say anything about it because it's a lot of people that are sad about this. And you guys have a tough job to do. It's a very hard job to do. And I know it's going to be some tough things that you guys have to do, but you guys ran and served, and you guys have to hold these officers accountable, these sheriffs accountable. Our government have to hold people accountable for these things. I don't even know where my time is, so if anybody could put that here.
I thought you just knew it automatically by now.
No, I don't know that. But I really just want to be able to say to you guys that I'm a voice here. I know the power that I have for my community. I know how hard I work. I've been able to bring things here, and things have failed, but things are going to get better. And I'm a very optimistic person. But I want you guys to know that I care about Kent County. I'm sorry that things, these things happen, but everything happens for a reason. Good or bad, I believe that. I believe in karma. As somebody said in here, there's different religious belief in different religions, but I believe in love. I believe in anything that the universe or that God was trying to spread. I believe it's love. And I don't think that we get enough of that in Kent County. I don't think we show enough of that to people of color. I don't think we show enough of that to people who run for offices, and then you guys don't show love to those people that run in offices because we have established political parties and agendas, and we don't always be diverse and truly equitable for our diverse candidates. So, I don't know where my time is, but I just want you guys to know that I care about Kent County. I love you guys, and that I'm here, and I know I'm a voice, and I know that you guys are going to have to have some hard decisions that is going to affect Kent County forever. And these law enforcement officers affect and do things that affect you guys' lives. You guys are getting calls. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Joyce Gibson, and I'm running for Commissioner for the third ward here in City Hall, here in Grand Rapids. And I'd just like to say that, that people's actions speak louder than their words. And I'm here to tell you that my actions, I'm a single parent, my kids will be 40, my twins will be 40 in two years. I'm a college graduate. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Psychology, and I'm also a recovering addict. I am 31 years free of, of, free of my disposition or my anger. I'm running for county, for Commissioner because I have something that I think I can contribute, and my background speaks for itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? I, oh, I do see someone else. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I'd just like to introduce myself. I am Ronald Seif, 1237 Underwood, Grand Rapids, and I am a delegate of the Urban Agriculture Initiative. This is a brand-new program of the Farm Services Agency. Grand Rapids is very privileged to be one of 17 urban districts in the country, and we have six members, three from each of the wards of Grand Rapids, East Grand Rapids, one for Kentwood, one for Holland, Ottawa County, and one for Muskegon. The programs consist of rooftop farming, community gardens, hydroponics, aeroponics, vertical production. Yes, beekeeping is considered to be a crop, and the, the six outlays, by the way, there will be an election for, later this year, for some of the rotating members. There will be a national convention in Detroit, August 4th to 6th, for urban farmers in the Huntington Place. The public is invited. The programs really are very numerous, as you know, for the Department of Agriculture, and trying to reach out to the social disadvantaged, the new farmers, veteran farmers, and young farmers all to be involved in farming. As you know, the pandemic affected the transportation of the food. The groceries were empty. So, this program, programs of the Urban Agriculture Initiative are trying to get the food locally produced. And as you know, electromagnetic pulse could happen at any time in which people are going to starve if there's not food. So, the grants and loans are available for So the grants and loans are available for people to, for example, to have the aquaponics. The fish will be insured in their, in their houses. Now, this program is not just for local consumption. You must either give away the food or sell the food as far as the programs stipulations of the FSA. Now, the office, of course, is in Eagle Park Drive of the FSA. Kristi Sullivan-Bon, you may know her, the acting director of the FSA from Michigan, had come to one of our meetings, and she's very enthusiastic about this program, Urban Agriculture Initiative. So I have some brochures here also to show people.
Thank you.
And if you know anyone that would like to serve on the committee, please let us know too.
Thank you.
So thank you.
All right. If there is no one else, we will now move to the Administrator's Report.
Yes, you should have each received a copy of the updated mandate study in your mailboxes. There's a lot there, but we will plan to have a board work session to go through that and explain what it is and how it can be used for good policymaking at Kent County. It was a pleasure to attend the ribbon cutting of the new transfer station up in North Kent. So congratulations to the DPW Board and Department for a great job with that. I know that's going to serve our county well and long into the future. We did complete our quadrant meetings with local units of government yesterday. Overall, we had really good turnout, really good questions, and many of the participants expressed their gratitude that the county does come out and provide information from so many, from administrative updates to, and what the board's doing and what our elected, countywide electeds. We actually had Tori Richardson stop by yesterday and gave a brief airport update. Road Commission gave a brief update, emergency management. So it was very well received, and we actually hit our time right on yesterday. So we, perfect landing, so. And is Matt Channing still out there? I think he's off working hard, so. But Matt, who was in the audience, basically, in case there were questions about the PDR issue, this will be his last board meeting. He's moving on out west to pursue a PhD. And so we wish he and his family well as he takes on new pursuits, and we'll certainly miss him here. He's somebody who really did a phenomenal job with the PDR and the Ag Board. So good luck to him. And that is all I have for today.
All right. Thank you all. We will now move to the next item, reports. Any Commissioners have a report? Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief one from yesterday's GV Metro Council Policy Committee. Those of you that navigate one thirty-one on a daily basis will be pleased to know that MDOT is planning to complete that project by Memorial Day. They are getting ready to start a new pilot Flex Lane project on one thirty-one northbound, which would add an extra travel lane during peak hours on the inside shoulder. They're piloting it with about six miles northbound. So for the summer months, they're hoping to have some of that work started so that they can increase access to those heading north. And finally, the Metropolitan Transit Plan, which is the metropolitan vision document that guides all of the work of the GVMC, is submitted officially. We took public comment as a county and submitted that up. And so now we have a plan through two thousand and fifty.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports? I see no other reports. We'll then move to miscellaneous. Does any Commissioner have a miscellaneous item? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I am sorry I missed the very first presentation or some of it with Paul Ryan with the Veterans Coalition. And I think he was speaking of Memorial Day, and I just, maybe he spoke of this, but just wanted to make sure people know the difference between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. There is a huge difference. And we always have to remember those that gave the ultimate sacrifices. Extremely important. Don't look at it like just a day off. Look at it like we have the opportunity in this country to celebrate our freedom based solely on the veterans that gave their lives. And also, to kind of dovetail onto that, we do an event every year called the Freedom Cruise, and we're going to be doing that on Friday, September sixth this year. And our recipient is Captain Miguel Nava, who tragically passed away on a training mission. You probably read about him. He was from Comstock Park High School. And we are going to be honoring him this September. And I'd like to welcome everybody to come to that. It's a really, really nice event, and it's going to do the family a lot of good to see people rally on behalf of their son. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you. Wanted to congratulate everybody that ran the Riverbank Run this weekend. I had the privilege of running the twenty-five K with ten thousand of my closest friends. And in particular, congratulate the female winner, Betsy Sina, who set a course record this weekend. So it was a great sight to see. The weather was fantastic. Also noted that yesterday, there was a crane's breaking news alert about the Grand Rapids Whitewater Project. And so I'd hope that Administrator Vanderberg could give us a little bit of an update about where that stands.
Sure. Well, we did receive an update at the DDA meeting last week. And so the city did submit an application for a revised design, and that was a result of the city and Grand Rapids Whitewater design team working with Eagle and DNR. This application starts the Eagle review process. There are parallel federal reviews that need to be completed with that for the revised design. The revised design will restore the rapids, improve habitat, increase accessibility of the river, and create some more paddling and boating opportunities. The city, working with review agencies, perform muscle relocation work in the river this summer. That's likely to happen, which will allow, the hope is that the larger work will then be able to occur in the two thousand and twenty-five season if all the approvals are received. The city reports, I think, more of an earnest relationship with Eagle and trying to help them get this done. And so I think optimism is up for a good result with this. And with the Leonard de Anne project going and others which are critical links in the Grand River Greenway project that, of course, we're working on, the backbone project to connect the Ottawa border to the Illinois border. It'll be a key piece of that whole run. I should mention, too, that the board, a number of years ago, actually prior to mine, starting back with Kent, did approve a CIP to contribute one point four million dollars to this project. They did allocate five hundred thousand dollars towards the planning, design permitting part. There's nine hundred thousand remaining in that CIP. It's anticipated that when the construction work starts, that the city will want to access that, and the project will want to access that in two pieces. It would be five hundred thousand and then later four hundred thousand. I'm anticipating that we'll have Whitewater here to present to you an update, and then with, along with an action request to extend that CIP approval. It did have some deadlines embedded. And certainly, I think, the project and the city have worked earnestly toward bringing this to a conclusion and have had some bumps in the road, but they're back on track. And so that will be coming for your consideration soon.
Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I was glad to see that the Michigan, that Michigan State Police concluded their investigation into the case surrounding Mr. Stern's death and passed it on to the Attorney General last week, if I'm not mistaken. Looking forward to seeing the results of that investigation and the actions that the Attorney General may take. But unless I'm mistaken, we still have not had information provided as to the circumstances that happened just a couple of weeks prior to that incident with the young man who was killed, who was struck by Kent County Sheriff's Deputy. I have a close friend who was working with that young man and who explained to me some of the circumstances behind that incident. I think if nothing else, these tragedies present a reason for us to reflect on some of the policing practices that are widespread across our country. I think that these are different circumstances, but both present opportunities for us to reflect on whether or not some reforms need to be, need to be had. I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to get more information specifically with the incident that occurred with one of our sheriff's deputies. But the community needs to be heard, and the community needs to feel that they have that trust with their law enforcement. And so I, this past week, participated in a meeting with the All Packt Committee here in our county. These things did come up, and we're hopeful that that committee can be one of the tools that we use to bring that trust between the community and law enforcement. And so, again, tragic circumstances, and I'm just hoping, hopeful that that we'll be able to have some truth and reconciliation here soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else ought to miss it? Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. We're a month past when taxes were due, and the Heart of Michigan United Way is a bit of a coordinator, offering support and very minimal financial assistance to the programs that do the low-income tax returns, the VITA tax programs. And it's a program that has large impact. I, I work with one nonprofit that provides one site here in Kent County. And this year, they worked with four hundred and ninety-nine households out of Trinity Reformed Churches, their location, a couple times a week. And the average income of the people who were, the families that were served was twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. And in all, they completed eight hundred and eighty-one tax returns. And this is only one site. The other way ministries on the west side just began as a real fresh startup and was able to do just a few returns and will do more next year. But the, the financial assistance is minimal from what the United Way has available. There used to be a program, a second part of this program coordinated through Davenport, and they're not there anymore. So this is, you know, definitely something that's needed, helpful in the community. And I hope that, you know, more support can be provided for. And to, so the refunds amounted to over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There were also home heating tax credits and property tax credits that were afforded to people through having this program. And because of the changes that were made and the decline of the, you know, number of people doing, the decline of Davenport and Kent County Community Action was not able to participate this year. They were not able to get in with, you know, get in at the ground level to get it going. So I mean, I, I hope that, from a county perspective, that we come, you know, are able to come back into this next year in terms of helping the families who are low-income in our community. It's a big help. I mean, it may pay the electric bill, the water bill, new shoes, help, you know, clothing for a growing child, or school supplies or the school field trip outing. It's, it's a very big help. And I, I'm encouraged by all the programs that there are, and I'm only speaking to one program that was.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Ponstein.
Looks like, it looks like we've got plenty of time today, so. So, no, I was, I always advocate for the Michigan Association of Counties and the National Association. There's so many opportunities to learn things. I am currently on the Board of Directors of MAC and the National Association. Last week, I spent some time in California, had no cost to county taxpayers. And it's interesting, the people that you run into in any county, any shape and size, you know, a lot of them are fighting the same type of problems. But, you know, the programming that both of these organizations do, and I was probably spoiled because I was on the Board of Directors. You know, I met with the supervisor of the Sierra National Forest, the superintendent of Yosemite National Park. There's a school in the middle, middle of the national park called the Nature Science Center. And it's a nonprofit, private school system that are popping up around, giving kids opportunities on something that I believed the whole time I was a school board member, that education is best delivered outside the four walls of the school. And it's remarkable. They service about ten thousand kids each year through a program at that school. They target urban children that have probably never been to a national park or to a national forest. So I was, you know, glad, glad to see that. I also got a chance to listen to Adrienne Haslett, who was a Boston Marathon bombing survivor, who told an incredible story about her life and, more importantly, of her with part of her leg missing, did at one time then finish the Boston Marathon. But opportunities are always abound when you go to these to meet new people, whether it's in Michigan or across the country. I spent one of my luncheons talking to one of the assistants to Governor Gavin Newsom, and we had a really interesting conversation on what faces counties and the states and when what you hear on TV is far from the truth of what's really happening. So I appreciate the time that both of those organizations have given me to do this, and I have a job that affords me time to get away because I am, I miss work and, and take other things to attend these, so. So I just encourage everyone to be involved. I left some booklets on the back table that I picked up. One of them is a book, or it's more like a cartoon book of what counties do, but it was all generated by AI. It's pretty interesting to look where that technology's gone. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just real briefly, I too wanted to thank Matthew Channing for his time here. You know, I always love when he comes to this dais and we have an item of his on the agenda because, you know, my longstanding joke, it's the one time Commissioner Antor and I agree on something. So we try to relish that. Kidding, of course. But, you know, I think since he started, he has shown an ability to tap into other funding sources that we've not historically been able to. He's been able to find other ways for us to advance our mission. You know, it's a, it's a tough job to have a task with a very slim budget, but he, he's made the most of it, and I really appreciate his efforts on that and wish him and his family the best of luck.
Very good. Thank you. All right. I, I checked Rule three point one seven, and it does allow me the flexibility of extending miscellaneous to the Administrator. So you have a miscellaneous item?
Yeah, I apologize.